Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, November 27, 2023. I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We'll begin today with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is attendance. We do have all of our councilors in attendance today. Counselor Danahue is remote, so we will be doing some roll call votes. Apologies to everyone for that. Item number four, public engagement. Sherry, do we have anyone who signed up online?
No Chairman, we have no one tonight.
All right, seeing no one in studio, we'll move on to item number five A, Flag Policy Update Proposal. Vice Chair McLean, do you want to set this up for us?
Sure. I had engaged in trying to update the flag policy some time ago. We put it on hold pending our joint meetings with the Veterans Advisory Board, Human Resources, and subsequent to that, we have come up with various iterations of a potential flag policy. This morning, you know, I had initially proposed one policy. You had come up with another idea. Your idea, it seemed to me to make some sense to not put mine forward, although I still support it, because then we would have had a situation where you would have been adding amendments to what I had initially proposed. And it just seemed neater to start out tonight's meeting with the most recent version that you had sent to me. Is that...
Fair?
Yep. Fair and accurate?
Absolutely.
History? And that being said, I think I would necessarily turn it to you, since you're presenting your current version, or the current version to be considered by the Town Council, subject to possible vote or amendments.
Sure, so I'm happy to speak through this a little bit. First of all, I do want to thank Counselor McLean for all of his work on this. So this has been, as he said, an involved process of a lot and back and forth. We've heard a lot of feedback from individuals. Both Vice Chair McLean and I attended the Veterans Advisory Board meeting now two weeks ago, and the Human Rights Commission last week, got more feedback there. And, you know, I think the intention and the effort here is to try to come up with something that, you know, will have some, you know, sort of broad support from the Council and individuals in the community. I don't think either of us are naive enough to say that it will have universal support. I think, you know, we know that that is an impossible standard. But, you know, we tried to sort of do our best to kind of solicit feedback from individuals involved, and put together a draft for discussion that isn't perfect. And I don't think that either Vice Chair McLean or I would say that this is sort of ideally what either of us would have come up with, but one that does represent, I think, a good faith effort to solicit and include feedback from various constituencies.
And my apologies, just to interrupt briefly.
Please.
I may have said Human Resources instead of Human Rights Commission.
No worries.
Sorry HRC.
So just to orient the Council to what's in the policy, the first four sections, section one through four, are identical to what is already in place, the policy that we approved last year. It speaks to which flag poles apply to it, the fact that the expression, flying of flags is an expression of official sentiment of the Town Council and not a public forum, and also sort of restates our responsibilities and how we fly the American flag and the POW flag in accordance with US Code as well as state law. The sections that are different start in section five. So here in section five, we've added a new section that speaks to other flags and commemorations, and it sets out a series of special rules. So one is that it does commit us as a town to making sure that we do have an appropriate event to commemorate Flag Day, and that we would not have an event to recognize any other flag or any event related to another flag on that day. So Flag Day would be recognized as, from an event standpoint, a day that we would recognize the US flag. We call for flying the Americal Division flag at one of the flag poles at the Americal Civic Center. So this is one piece of feedback that we did receive from the Veterans Advisory Board, as something that, you know, felt like an appropriate recognition of the history of that building. And so the policy does call for flying that for, at all times, except for the month of June. In June, what we do is codify in this policy our current practices, or at least what we've done over the last few years with regard to flying an appropriate Pride flag, as well as the Juneteenth flag, and it does set some dates around that. We specify that we won't entertain requests to fly other or additional flags in this policy. Obviously, it's a policy, so we as a council could change that at any point in time. And then section seven, we do state that we recognize that because this policy, as we are discussing it today, if we do choose to vote on it or adopt it, because at this time, the only location that's subject to this policy that has a second flag pole is the Americal Civic Center, we do acknowledge that if in the future we do end up with multiple flag poles at other locations, that we would obviously want to revisit section five. So that's the summary there. Again, I want to express appreciation to Vice Chair McLean for the work on this. This has been taking up probably more mind space than I think either of us anticipated over the last couple of months, but with that, wanted to open it up to discussion. And since you are remote, if you do raise your hand and I don't catch you, please chime in, since sometimes it's hard to see the little hand icon. Counselor Smith Galvin?
I guess I'm just wondering, and we have talked about flag and flag policies many, many times before, and I'm wondering why, why both of you felt this needed to be done? Was there a feedback that we hadn't heard? I mean, we had talked to the Human Rights Commission, we had talked to, they had talked to the veterans, we hadn't, but maybe just a little more background would be helpful.
Sure.
Since I kicked it off, I think what I'd say in response to that Counselor is that I felt last June that this kind of came upon us, and I know there were some of us who really felt this way, that, you know, we were kind of faced with a quick decision on what to do for Flag Day. I wanted to get out ahead of it this year. That was my preliminary, you know, reason for doing it. And I've said this at meetings we've gone to, I somewhat selfishly wanted to close the loop, so that we weren't getting requests biweekly, sometimes multiples. And I also had come to a change of opinion relative to the way I voted last June, that, you know, the veterans, that the, only the USA flag and the POW flag would fly on that one day, on June 14th, on Flag Day. So I had changed my opinion on that over time. And, you know, I won't belabor it, we've all been dealing with this for many, many months, but I thought that, you know, the sincerity of the veterans who wanted to do that, you know, had impressed me to the point where I was ready to change my vote. So that's, that's kind of what got it started, and there were iterations in between, because I believe it was Counselor Vincent who had posited an idea about service flags. So then we went through the service flags with the Veterans Advisory Board. They actually weren't as interested in that as, you know, I was a little surprised, but, you know, I thought they might be interested in that, but they were not. So we moved that in to one of the iterations, one of the word documents, and we moved it out. So there have been, you know, there's been some, you know, some back and forth based on different ideas that have been posited. We also had, you know, at our meeting at Human Resources, Human Resources, I wonder what you said, I'm thinking of Human Rights Commission, we had, you know, talked about opinions there, and we got some good feedback on, you know, potential for feeling that if we did USA only, the process of removing the Pride flag for that one day might send a message that, you know, not everybody was comfortable with. But, you know, that was one individual who spoke very honestly to us. Beyond that, we didn't really, you know, get a ton of feedback as to individuals' particular opinions.
That's very helpful, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've spent considerable time speaking with the Veterans Advisory Board and veterans specifically on this issue, being liaison to the, to the board. And I think there are a few things here that are important to point out. And I also had the opportunity to watch the, the Human Rights Commission's most recent meeting too, so I appreciate, you know, the input that they offered. Just one point of clarification, they, it was pointed out that by the, by the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, that the, that we do take down the Pride flag when we replace it with the Juneteenth flag.
Yes, it was.
And so I thought that was an important observation that she had made relative to that. And, and I do know that, having watched the concern, or watched, watched the meeting and hearing the concern of the one member about the Pride flag, she had indicated there might be, in essence, an unintended consequence by taking down, you know, by taking down a flag and having it just be the American flag, POW MIA on June 14th. I don't think she was particularly strong in her conviction either way. I think she raised it appropriately as, as an observation of something that, to be aware of.
I agree.
That's how I interpreted her, her comment. But I'll say in contrast to, to that feedback, the veterans have been for months quite clear in their requests. And the biggest request that I've heard repeatedly, and that's why they made it when they did back in, in the spring, was to have Flag Day represent the American flag. And that request was made, as we know formally, before this body. It was voted down by some of my colleagues. I guess all of my colleagues, I think, may, say for maybe one other than me. But be as it may, they also made it, made a request after that, asking that going forward, that that just be a standing request. So in perpetuity, Flag Day be treated that way. And I think, Counsel McLean, to your point, that also got you thinking about, all right, how do we thread this needle to, to be able to accommodate the request? I think that the request of the Veterans Advisory Board is quite reasonable, for a few reasons. One of them is the Americal has a tremendously significant and rich military history. The Americal Division, General Norman Schwarzkopf, Colin Powell, were both affiliated with, with, you know, the Americal. That, that's significant. And I think what came out of the meeting that you both had attended as well was, it's really important that we not just look at the Americal as another town asset, but instead appreciate the history of that, of that building in particular. I think the suggestion for the second flag pole, there were two suggestions ultimately. One, that the Americal flag, because there is such a thing, that that be flown on the second flag pole at all the other times, basically. Or two, that, or in addition, that the state flag also be considered to be flown. And I think both of those are very reasonable, you know, suggestions. But the Veterans Advisory Board has been absolutely clear that they are requesting Flag Day be for the American flag and only the American flag in the POW MIA. And when I look at this policy, five A in particular, it talks about on Flag Day working in collaboration with the VAB to, to host a public event. And I know Chairman Chines, at the Human Rights Commission meeting, you had indicated that the Scouts do something, but it has been quite a long time since the, the town and American Legion have done something. That's just not accurate. The American Legion, each year in collaboration with the Scouts and with town officials, hosts a Flag Day commemoration every year on the, on the Upper Common. I mean, the most recent was just five months ago. So it's not accurate to represent it as this is some kind of tradition that has gone, you know, gone by the wayside. It's, it's, it's active and it's live. And they made that point in their last meeting that you both had attended. So I think that that's, that's important to underscore here. The idea that we would take a policy, this is a flag policy, the idea that we would carve out and create, and be overly prescriptive with creating an event, one, that the Veterans Advisory Board already made clear, they're, they already have, so they're not looking to add something. They say they have it. And they made that clear. And two, that we're, we would have a flag policy that is prescriptive about a particular event that needs to happen. You know, Veterans Advisory Board, Human Rights Commission, Council on Aging, all of these, all these appointed bodies have events. And we don't spell out which should or should not be had, but what it feels like is a disingenuous attempt to appease the veterans by saying, we'll have an event for you. And I think it's tone deaf, because they have an event, and they've had it for years. And so, putting, building that in and still not acknowledging their request and ultimately honoring it, that for one day, we have just the American flag flying. I note that in 2023, we did the transition from Pride to, to Juneteenth flag on the 15th of June, which was one day after Flag Day. So their position was, well, can't you just kind of move the transitioning just by a date to allow for one day where we have the American flag? And I think that was an imminently, you know, a reasonable request. And I have no issue with the Pride flag. I support the Pride flag. I mean, I think I'm the only one around this table that's a member of that community. So I think I speak from a different, different place on that. And similarly, the Juneteenth flag, of course, that's, that's a flag that should be celebrated. But when we, we get down to it, we have the LGBTQ plus community, we have Juneteenth, and there's a certain level of deference there. But we don't have that level of deference, from my, my opinion, for the veterans. And instead, we're saying, oh, we'll just, we'll have an event for you. And, and I think it's tone deaf to not acknowledge that they already have an event that they do. So that's, they have that, they're not looking for that. And the fact that we're trying to, to tell them, well, this is what we'll do in place of your request, I don't think that's, that aligns with what they're looking for, nor do I think it's, it's appropriate. I still fail to see the issue of flying the American flag as a standalone on Flag Day. I just don't, I don't get it. And I have yet to have a single person articulate why that, why we can't do that. We take down the Pride flag for what's proposed here, a week, to fly the Juneteenth flag. Does that mean that they're mutually exclusive? Of course not. But that's just the reality of it, right? So how is it the taking down, you know, other flags so that the American flag, a flag that we can all, you know, be proud of, you know, to be under, and it should be universally uniting, is a problem? And, and I just, I, I fail to see the logic or reason there. It's not as slight to the LGBTQ plus community. I can say first off, I am not offended by it. I know plenty of others who are not offended by it. We fly that, we're flying that flag for, you know, ultimately about three weeks of the four-week month. I don't, I don't see how the Juneteenth flag is, is affected, because the dates we're talking about are after Flag Day. So I have real concern about this, you know. Again, this goes back to, you know, say the Dombrowski doctrine on this, fly the American flag in the POW MIA and call it a day, so we're not in the business of calling balls and strikes. I mean, we're already rescinding a policy that was just put into place, what, a year ago? So I think that kind of goes to show that it wasn't a good policy. But setting that all aside, with what we're faced with now, I, I don't understand why this is so difficult to be able to honor a simple veteran's request. And I'd love to hear someone explain to me why it is that on June 14th, we can't just honor that request.
So just a couple of things. Thank you for your comments. A couple of things to clarify. First of all, when we did go to the Veterans Advisory Board meeting, no one actually expressed a specific preference around taking the flag down on June 14th. There was a, a preference expressed on not flying any flag other than the American flag and POW flag at any other time, but I think those are two different issues. And I want to make sure that, as the Council, if folks haven't had a chance to watch the meeting, that they're aware of that. I would just also ask if we could step away from calling into questions people motives. You used the word disingenuous, and I really think everyone is trying to kind of do the right thing here. We may come into this with different perspectives and land in different places, but I don't think anyone's motive here is suspect, or anyone's motive here is anything but respectful of all of the constituents involved. So I would ask all of us as we go through that to please make sure we keep that in mind. Counsel McLean?
If I could just do a clarification, Counsel Dombrowski, and it's not much of one, because I agree with, you know, a fair amount of what you said. I just want to point out though, at the meeting, we had talked about the state flag, and I think it's pretty well understood by all of us. I had brought up, you know, that we had discussed that situation with Counselor Mullen, Town Council Mullen, and that, you know, we probably would need another flag pole or by Town Hall to fly that flag. And in fact, then, if we moved other flags over there, we'd probably need two more flag poles over, over there. And relative to the, you know, the town day event, the town event on Flag Day, yeah, I, I don't, didn't feel terribly strongly about it. I tried to pursue, you know, the Veterans Advisory Board relative to how strongly they felt about that. I would agree with you. I wouldn't say it's disingenuous to put it in there. I think by the time we, we got an answer, I think it was pretty much, you know, well, like you say, we already have that, and, and you're welcome. I kind of felt like we, we could put that in. I don't for a minute claim that that supplants their other requests. But I think, you know, I thought the Veterans Advisory Board was okay with that. I know they were more than okay with the, with the Americal Division flag. And that's what I took from that meeting. And I agree to some extent with the Chair in the sense that it seemed like after an hour of discussion, the one thing we didn't really spend a ton of time on...
Was Flag Day.
Was Flag Day. If you go back and re-watch it, you were there. I mean, it's the one thing we didn't spend a ton of time on. But I'm not denying that I think I know what the Veterans Advisory Board position is on that. I think I know it very well, and I think that, that's, you know, one of the things I've been considering when I first started this process. I don't mean it for it to be, you know, viewed as saying we had bad policy. I think we had, we had a policy that met the short-lived decision requirements that was, you know, somewhat tight. It wasn't your policy. But I didn't have a big problem with that. When I did want, as I said to Counselor Smith Galvin, I wanted to try to narrow that circle. So, you know, in the future, when you say, I wouldn't accept said flag because I'm USA only, I would say, I wouldn't accept said flag because I don't have to, because we've drawn the circle around the flags that we, as a Town Council, who are, for better or worse, sourced with this job, have decided to fly, and, and no others, no biweekly requests. That was part of my real motivation too. But I agree as much of what you said. I just wanted to clarify, we did talk about the state flag, we talked about, it wasn't probably going up at the Americal, and we, and we, you know, I don't think the Board had a negative reaction to the, you know, addition of, and I don't think it's necessarily necessary, I agree with you on that, you know, that the Town Council be involved. We should be involved anyway. Maybe it doesn't need to be in the policy. Maybe we leave it in, maybe we take it out. I think it's kind of neutral.
Thank you. Counsel Danahue, then Counsel Vincent.
Hi. So to go back to Counselor Smith Galvin's question, I didn't like the, I voted on the policy, and, you know, as things evolve, we learn. One thing that I felt uncomfortable about with our current policy is that I kind of felt like it lacked transparency, because we could decide what goes on the agenda and what doesn't go on it, and that is perfectly legal. It met our legal requirements. I feel uncomfortable not having the flag requests come to us, but at the same time, I also don't want to give a voice, I don't want to give a voice to hate groups that could come here. So the Ku Klux Klan, Proud Boys, they could come and just to get attention, could come here and say that they want their flag flown, and we would have, and we would hear that. I don't want to, I don't want to give them any kind of a voice. So that is why I'm in favor of changing the current policy that we have. Now, I did go, I did watch the Veterans Advisory Board meetings, the one where the, at the, you know, end where they decided that they just voted to, last year, voted just to have the American flag flown on Flag Day. But some of the reasoning was that it was so that there could be attention, bring back how it, how Flag Day used to be, that it was a, a bigger celebration. I'm not sure that flying just the American flag on Flag Day is going to accomplish that. You know, I, I'm not sure it's going to accomplish that. I like that it's a town-sponsored event for Flag Day. I also want to say is that the flag represents all of us. The American flag is not just for veterans, it's for all of us. We're all Americans, and we should all be very proud of what that flag represents. And I know that I'm very proud of the flag and proud to be an American. I've never served in the armed forces. I have great respect for those who have, who have. And I do listen to them, and I, you know, and I do want to recognize, recognize them. But the last Veterans Advisory Board meeting that I listened to, I was really trying to understand why. What was it that they were hoping to achieve? And it really was not talking about flying the American flag on Flag Day. It focused more on the second flag pole. So I left that meeting very confused and not really understanding where they stood on that. So that, I mean, I haven't, you know, it really is a departure from Flag Code, because there's nothing in Flag Code that says that on Flag Day, only the American flag can fly. So, and I haven't gotten any kind of a, any kind of an answer as to why there's that, that interest. My other question is that I, that I do have is that, you know, we're, we're so focused on taking down the Pride flag on Flag Day, on Flag Day, and, you know, it's one day, you know, it's one day, it's, and I, and I don't, I, I don't necessarily have an issue with that, but I would expect that if it is, and I might need some clarification from Town Administrator or Town Council, but if we took down, if we took, if we only, made a policy only to fly the American flag, it's not just the Pride flag that would come down, right? We have General Galvin flag at Galvin Middle School, and do we also have it public safety? Is that where the state flag is flown?
Mr. Mayo, do you know?
Yes, yes to both questions.
Okay. So it's not just the flag, the Pride flag that would come down. It would be the state flag and the General Galvin flag that would come down.
And POW MIA flags remain as well.
Okay. So, you know, this is not, I, I feel like it's almost, has become a political division, and I don't think that it should be. I don't think that it should be, because this is not about just taking down the Pride flag, because it was, General Galvin flag would come down, and the state flag would come down on Flag Day, just the American flag would be flown. So that's just a comment, but it, I, I, this is a very hard one. I mean, I'm very conflicted. All I know is that I'm in favor of changing the current policy that we have, because I think it lacks transparency. And at the same time, I don't want to give, lacks transparency, and I'd say bring every, every request to a public meeting. But again, I don't want to be the voice for public, I don't want to give voice in a public forum for organizations that are hate organizations. So I'm in favor of changing the policy.
Thank you Counsel. Counsel Vincent?
Thank you Chair Chines. First of all, I want to commend Chair Chines and Vice Chair McLean for meeting with the Veterans Advisory Board and the Human Rights Commission. I think that showed excellent leadership, and I appreciate the fact that you took the time to meet with both organizations. I've spent a lot of time contemplating this, and I decided to evaluate it this way. I drew upon life experiences and precedent. My life experiences, real briefly, is as a parent, I've always supported my daughter and her wife through my efforts with the Greater Boston Parents and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, and also serving as the first Vice Chair of the Wakefield Human Rights Commission. I looked up recently, I actually was on the Human Rights Commission when we first asked you all to fly the Pride flag back in June of 2019. Also, as an American citizen, echoing what Counselor Danahue said, I recognize that Flag Day is for all Americans. And as a retired naval officer, it is very relevant to me that the location of the second flag pole is at the Americal Civic Center, which is the building with the most significant military history in Wakefield. But then I also look at precedents. And when I look at precedents, I have a tendency to gravitate towards... And when I look at precedents, I have a tendency to gravitate towards federal precedents, probably because of my 26 years of military service. So I did some research, and I looked up, over the last few years, a multitude of federal buildings have flown the Pride flag throughout the month of June. Others, such as the State Department, actually flew the flag, the Pride flag, between June 26th and 28th to commemorate the Supreme Court decision on June 26, 2015, legalizing gay marriage, and the start of the Stonewall riots, which took place on June 28, 1969. So some of them flew it just on those particular days, but many other federal buildings flew the Pride flag throughout the month of June. As I continued my research, what was very significant to me was that the federal buildings that flew the Pride flag throughout the month of June did not take down the Pride flag on June 14th. Accordingly, I'm actually going to support this amendment to the, the change to the current policy. To me, flying the Americal Division flag for approximately 335 days annually fittingly recognizes the military significance and history of the Americal Civic Center, along with a town-sponsored Flag Day event. That coupled with the precedent that the federal buildings did not remove the Pride flag on Flag Day is very persuasive to me. In summation, I recognize that this is not what the Veterans Advisory Board originally requested. But I'm a realist, and I don't see a majority support for removing the Pride flag on Flag Day. This is a compromise, which are things that we're supposed to do as a town council, that is suitable for me, based upon my life experiences and the precedent that I previously discussed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Other comments? Counselor Dombrowski?
A couple of things. I guess, one, Counselor Vincent, I'd be curious to know if, whether the Pride flag was taken down for the Juneteenth flag, or whether the Juneteenth flag flew in its, in its place at any point, when you, when you mentioned. So if, if a federal building was flying, say, the Pride flag for the entire month, then, you know, how would the Juneteenth flag have been flown? I get what you're saying, for the 26th to 28th, obviously, that's not an issue, because it's not conflicting calendar-wise. So I think that's, so I think we have a little bit different circumstance here in that. We have, when you're talking about precedent, we have locally set a precedent of taking down the Pride flag in deference to Juneteenth, which I, I support, you know, I think that that's reasonable. But when we're talking about compromise, I don't see where the compromise is here, because basically, all this does is etch in stone that two flags will be allowed to be flown on the second flag pole, and I don't have any issue with other of those flags being flown. But there's no comp, let's, let's call it what it is. This is not, this is not a compromise. Now, if Counselor Danahue raises the point about hate groups making requests of us, okay, then by eliminating the opportunity for them to do that, perhaps that's a compromise of Counselor Danahue's concerns. I do think also, though, by rejecting such hate group flags, you're also sending a message, which in and of itself, I think sends an important, you know, is an important reflection of what the town sentiment may be, that we don't, you know, tolerate hate groups. But what, I come from a place of having listened to the veterans, not just at the meeting that we, we, the three of us were on, but prior meetings to that. I believe, Counselor Vincent, I think you were there at the, at the breakfast social on a Sat, on that Saturday morning where that, the issue came up about flags. We're, you know, we had a number of questions that were provided to us off, then, and we discussed that issue. It had been discussed at prior Veterans Advisory Board meetings. So this has been, and obviously, it was voted on unanimously, the request was back when it was first presented before us in June, when it was denied by a majority of this body. So I, I think that it, we're, we're not compromising to acknowledge and respect the request of the Veterans Advisory Board. I didn't hear any, anything from Human Rights Commission that took issue with, you know, meaningful, you know, took meaningful issue. Just raised some, some questions, and appropriately so, just about, you know, just the policies generally, but I didn't hear anything from the, the Human Rights Commission saying, "No, we, we strongly do not support this, you know, this request." And so, and I know the Veterans Advisory Board had talked about speaking with the Human Rights Commission, just to make sure that, you know, they were fine with the request. And I, I think it's fair to say that the Human Rights Commission, no one on, that we've appointed on, on that body, has taken issue with, with this Veterans Advisory Board request. So if the compromise is telling the Veterans Advisory Board that they can have an event that they're already having, I don't see that as, as a compromise. I see that as a cop-out. I see that as a way of trying to get, trying to dodge the request by saying, "Oh, we'll do something different in its place." I think the, the better thing to do, I think the true leadership is to say, you know, "We understand what you're saying, we respect what you're saying." As Counselor Danahue said, the flag does represent us all. And I do, do think that we have an opportunity here to be able to take one day, one day, to allow for this request to be made. I don't think it will have any impact on, on those who are proud to see the LGBTQ-plus, you know, Pride flag flying. I don't think it'll, it won't have any impact on, on Juneteenth, because of the timing of things. So, you know, I, I still have yet to hear an articulation as to why, having just this request honored for one day in a month of 30, we, we can't as a body support that. And, and I'm not hearing that.
So just as a clarification, before we get to some comments, there was feedback from the Human Rights Commission. There was one individual that actually spoke specifically about this issue around taking the flag down. So I don't think it's accurate to say that there was no argument as to taking the flag down on Flag Day. But Counselor Vincent, you had your hand up.
Well, thank you, Chair Chines. The more significant thing to me is not the Flag Day event that the town council's going to work on with the Veterans Advisory Board. What was more significant to me is there's three flags being flown at the Americal under this policy. And the third one is the Americal Division flag, which would fly for 335 days a year out of 365. And to me, personally, as a veteran, that was significant. And that was significant in my evaluation. I did not see any evidence to answer your one question about the Ju, I don't think federal properties, a lot of the federal buildings were taking down the Pride flag to put up the Juneteenth flag. The Juneteenth flag is relatively new, so I don't know how they plan to do that in the future. I just saw that they flew the Pride flag throughout the, the month. And, and I go to the coffee socials, and I was the liaison last year, and I know a lot of veterans don't agree with me. A lot of veterans have told me at those coffee socials and offline that they want the American flag and the POW flag only all year. I don't agree with that, but using the word compromise, I have to look at the fact that I don't see support of a majority of this council to support taking down the Pride flag on Flag Day. So that's why I worked with Chair Chines and Vice Chair McLean to try to come up with the idea, for instance, of flying the service flags, which candidly would have answered the, this problem, because the Ameri, the Army's birthday is on June 14th. And I, that was something that had some support when we were talking as members of town council, but correctly, the Veterans Advisory Board voted against that. So then we had to go back to the drawing board to see what can we come up with, what can we craft that a majority of the council can support. Last night, I was on the phone with two town council members. I did not know how I was going to vote on this. I spent a lot of time today contemplating this. It wasn't until late this afternoon that I decided to write out what I wrote out today and read this. I very easily could have, have had a, come to a different conclusion, but for the reasons I articulated in my life experiences and the research that I did, I'm comfortable with this decision.
Other comments? Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Yeah, just like to make one brief comment.
Please, oh yeah, sorry, I thought you were all set.
I didn't know we were getting to the motion phase, but now we're here. I don't think that there's a body on this council that isn't welcoming. I don't think that there's a person on this council that isn't welcoming. I do, some would agree with what I've heard relative to the flying only the US flag on Flag Day, and to the extent that I support everything that is in the most recent version, I will be voting against it, because I do agree that flying only the US flag on Flag Day would not really be a slight to anybody. It would not make us a less welcoming community. So I just want to make that clear, because I am going to move that we vote on the policy as presented to the town council, the revised policy.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further, oh, sorry, Counselor Danahue.
Hi, I just had one more comment that I wanted to make, is that I don't want to lose sight by the fact that, you know, in the Veterans Advisory Board, there was a lot of time spent, and I've learned a lot about flags and about the history of the Americal, and flying the Americal flag seemed to be of great interest during that meeting. So I don't want to lose sight of that. I'm supporting, the reason that I'm supporting this revised flag, the new flag policy, is, like I said, the only reason is whether we fly on, whether we fly just the American flag on June 14th, or we fly the Americal flag, or we fly Americal flag. The, the point for me is that I think it creates a more transparent and clear process, and I think I articulated why I'm supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Counselor Dombrowski?
So I have a motion then, that I'm looking, that I'm offering to make to amend the motion that's, that's before this body relative to the policy.
Okay. What's your motion?
So my, my motion is to amend paragraph 5A to read that on Flag Day, June 14th, only the American flag and POW, MIA flag shall be flown in, to commemorate Flag Day, honoring the American flag and recognizing Wakefield's veterans and active-duty service members. No public events related to other flags shall be hosted by the town of Wakefield or any other town board, commission, or committee on Flag Day, June 14th.
I need a chance if you written that down.
Well, that's actually, I'm using the 5A, the 5A language.
No, I know, I know. So just to be clear, so then, as I'm jotting down what you said, on Flag Day, June 14th, only the American flag and POW flag shall be flown, no public events, is that the correct?
Yeah, right. And we can keep in the language about honoring the American flag and recognizing Wakefield's veterans and active-duty service members. They can provide a little bit of context as to why we say that.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
So with this motion, we would only fly the American flag on Flag Day. Any other flag, General Galvin, state flag, Pride flag comes down just for June 14th. And then the second flag pole would have the Americal flag for the 11 months other than June. Would that stay in place?
Yeah, that's a different section.
I'm only amending 5A, so everything, so what you're referring to, the Americal Division flag is 5B. So the rest of the policy would, proposed policy would remain intact.
So for June 14th, if I'm understanding it correctly, no other flag would fly. So that would not include the Americal Division flag on the second flag pole. That would be empty on Flag Day, if I'm understanding the intent correctly.
That's the, the American flag and POW, MIA on June 14th, correct.
I understand that, but I think that, I mean, I want to, I guess that then do I amend 5B? Is that what I do after? Are we voting on this section by section?
Well, so let's take one motion at a time. So right now, there is a motion to amend related to 5A. So let, let's focus on that first, and then if there's another motion to be made later, let's, let's address that separately, if that's okay.
Well, it's contingent, though, for me.
If I may just, 5B allows for the Americal flag to fly on the second flag pole 11 months of the year, excepting the month of June, because the month of June would otherwise be occupied by the, the Pride flag, the Juneteenth flag, and by my amendment, no flag for that one day.
Yeah, but my support of, my support for just doing it on, flying the American flag on Flag Day is going to be contingent on the second flag pole, the decision with that. So can I, should I just say what it is?
Well, it's discussion.
So we're having discussion right now. So again, let's focus on this, and then, I, I want to make sure other folks get a chance to talk, and then, and if you want to amend the amendment, let's come back to that. But let's try to sort of keep us from getting too sort of confused with too many amendments just at one time. So can I come back to you on that piece of it? I, I think, I think the council understands where you're coming from on that, and here's your point.
Okay.
Any other comments on Counselor Dombrowski's amendment? Counselor Smith Galvin?
I, I can tell that Counselor Chines and Counselor McLean both put a lot of time into this, and, and I appreciate all of it. I, I, I guess I, I like the proposal as it is, so I'll be voting against the amendment, right, which will take us back to the original proposal.
Correct.
So I think a lot of thought has gone into this, from what I'm hearing, and I admit, I did not listen to all of that, but it sounds to me like there was some robust discussion, and I trust that this proposal came as a reflection of that robust discussion. And so I'll be supporting it as it is, and I'm voting against the amendment.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Yeah, I, I just would not be in favor of taking down General Galvin's flag on Flag Day. One of the things that, when the Veterans Advisory Board wrote to us last May, one of the things they said was that the American flag is also an opportunity, Flag Day is an opportunity to remember those who fight to protect it and the nation for which it stands, and to take down General Galvin's flag one day a year, and that day to be Flag Day, is something that I just would not support. His flag should fly all 365 days a year, in my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor. Just before we get to you, I want to make sure others have a chance to talk. Counselor Dombrowski, you know, just to add my thoughts on this one, it's easy to say that it's one day. It is easy to say that it's one day, and I, and I think that it's, it's easy to sort of look at that as a reasonable place to go. But my concern is twofold. I think one is that taking down the Pride flag on Flag Day does suggest, and I think this was one of the comments made at the Human Rights Commission, not intentionally, and again, I, you know, commented earlier on making sure that we, we don't assume people's motives in all of this, and I, I want to be clear that I don't think that this is an intentional message of taking down the Pride flag. But it can be construed as somehow suggesting that the Pride flag is somehow anathema to celebrating the American flag. And, you know, I was, when we started this process, I know Counselor McLean and I had some frank discussions about this, I have probably with almost everyone on the council in an individual way. I, I have trouble wrapping my head around that. The other thing, though, and I, and I think this does speak to the relevance of having an event, is that if we do want to honor the flag, the American flag, taking down the Pride flag alone, I don't think does that. And if you want evidence of that, I can tell you the number of people who, after this came up last year, said, "I don't understand why we're flying the Pride flag for the first time on Flag Day." And I said, "Well, actually, we've been flying the Pride flag in June, including on Flag Day, for the last four or five years at that point, now five or six years." And so just taking down the Pride flag, I don't think serves the purpose of honoring the American flag the way that we should. And that's why putting some more emphasis on the event and having the town take a more active role, having us take a more active role, and I think a good event that's happened, but one that could be promoted more effectively by the town, one that could be inclusive of more parts of town government, I think is an opportunity we have to send a more positive message. So I, I don't support the amendment. I know, Counselor Danahue, you want to amend the amendment, so I'll give you a chance to do that in just a moment, but I, I don't support taking down the Pride flag on, on the 14th. I think it's a missed opportunity for us to really do, to do more, and I think candidly to do better, both for the LGBT plus community, as well as for the veterans and all of us who, who want to honor the American flag in the right way. So other comments before we get to Counselor Danahue's amendment to the amendment? Counselor Dombrowski?
Just in, in the interest of compromise, I, I agree with Counselor Vincent, that if, you know, the General Galvin flag, I think you certainly quite articulately laid out why it should fly 365, so I would be happy to amend my amendment to add General Galvin, Galvin's flag would also be flying on that day.
So hold off on that. I know Counselor Danahue wanted to make an amendment first, so Counselor Danahue.
Yeah, so I wanted, I just also want to say is that I still support, I think... that we, as a town council, we host a ceremony for Pride, we host a ceremony for Juneteenth. I think we should do it for Flag Day, regardless of whether the pride flag and the other flags are going to be flying on Flag Day or not. I think that, I think that it is something that we should do. And, you know, so I do not, I am not in favor of taking that event away, because I think it should be sponsored. I think it should be something that we, as a town, are doing. So I'm not supportive of that. I could be supportive of only flying the American flag on Flag Day, because I understand if the importance is, is to have a focus only on the American flag for Flag Day, I'm okay with that. But my issue is with the second flag. To, for me to support that, I would be supportive of the Americal flag being flown on the 11, the other 11 months of the year, but I would also want the pride flag to fly throughout the year. Because I think that the pride flag is not a, it's, it's not tied to a holiday, but is tied to kind of who we are, and it kind of reflects back onto our mission statement in terms of that we are an inclusive community. And so I see no reason, and if this issue of the, flying the American flag is, has absolutely nothing to do with, with the pride flag, then there should be no issue with it. So I say, don't fly the American flag, I mean, only fly the American flag on Flag Day, and then on every other day, fly the Americal flag at the Americal, at the Americal Civic Center, along with the pride flag. And on Juneteenth, the pride flag and the Americal, Americal flag come down. So that would be the way that I would support just flying the, I have no issue with just flying the American flag on Flag Day. That doesn't bother me.
So Counsel?
But I don't, but I'm concerned that I don't want this, this is not a political issue. This is not whether you're pro-LGBTQ or pro, you know, you know, the other side, whatever it is. I think that this is, this is an opportunity for us to really speak in terms of what we keep saying, is that we are in our mission statement and the, in Vision 2030 document about being a welcoming and inclusive community. So that would be my amendment.
Okay, so is that, is that a motion, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the motion is to amend the amendment such that 5C would read that the pride flag, I'm going to paraphrase, but would read that the pride flag would fly at the Americal Civic Center every day except for Flag Day and when the Juneteenth flag is flying?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, and, and please add in that I think that Counselor Dombrowski took out the event for Flag Day. I'd like to keep the event in there.
He did not. Actually, I'm sorry, I take that back. He did.
Okay. So I'd like, on June 14th, only the American flag flies.
So is this a new motion, or she amending that motion?
So this is an amendment to Counselor Dombrowski's motion. So the amendment is to modify, again, I'm going to paraphrase, modify 5A so that the event takes in place and we fly only American flag and POW flag, and to modify 5C to state that the pride flag would fly every day except 6/14 and the days that the Juneteenth fly, flag are flying. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, and if you want to add in that General Galvin flight, flag flies on Flag Day, that's fine, since that was an amendment, an amendment to the amendment before my amendment.
Okay. So again, let me just restate, amend 5A so that on June 14th Flag Day, we would have an event, plus we would only fly the American POW and General Galvin flags, and amend 5C so that the, a flag appropriate commemorating Pride would fly every day except for June 14th and the days the Juneteenth flag is flying. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion on Counselor Danahue's amended motion to Counselor Dombrowski's motion. Counselor?
I, I don't know how better to stress the fact that on the Upper Common, every Flag Day, we have a commemoration that includes this, a scout troop 701 that retires all the flags, where all the places around town where you can drop off a flag, and then this, they retire the flags there. We have actually a permanent pit structure for that purpose there, and we have the American Legion that is present. They, every year, already have a commemoration. So like this notion that the town, I will say that members of the, of the veteran community have said to me that they wish that more town councils attended this particular event, but we have the event. And so this notion that we're somehow taking out a duplicative prescription for an event that already exists, I don't understand. It's there. And anything that the Veterans Advisory Board wants to do, just as they do with Memorial Day, just as they do with Veterans Day, just as the HRC does with MLK and Credit Scott King Day, it, it's within their, their purview to do it, if they want to do anything more than that. So I don't, I don't understand why we're, we're saying, oh, we're, we're taking away an event. There's already an event. We're not doing anything more than just streamlining this to reflect what the realities are here. And then taking down the pride flag on Veterans Day, I mean, excuse me, on Flag Day, seems to run counter to what some of the arguments against taking, having the, the flag fly solely, the American flag fly solely on Flag Day. So I, I don't, I don't totally follow. And I think that it also seems odd to be taking down, having the pride flag year-round, but taking it down in deference to the Juneteenth flag, because they're not necessarily mutually exclusive either, right? And so I, I just think that there, that kind of conceptually, it seems like a bit inconsistent from my perspective. So for that reason, I'm not going to support the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Danahue, do you have your hand up anew, or is that just from before?
It's anew. I took it down and put it back up.
Okay, please.
I, I don't know what you don't, I'm supportive of flying only the American flag on Flag Day, and we can add the General Galvin flag can fly. I'm okay with that on Flag Day. And then the other days, and that, and that we can take down the pride flag for Juneteenth, and then fly it for the other days of the year. I don't, I, I think it's pretty clear. I am okay if you want, if, I am okay that if you, we think that the, that the event could be competitive with other events that go on on Flag Day, I'm okay not having it on Flag Day. And I, just for the record, I do want to state that on Flag Day, every year, I am in London working. So for the month of June, I'm in London. So that's why I not attended, but I'd be happy to, and when I retire, I will do that. So I'm, if, if we think that it's going to be a competitive event, then take that out. Let's take that out of the.
Well, let's stay with the motion as, as stated. Other comments? Counselor McLean?
Counselor Dombrowski, I'm trying to understand your, your current position, and I know a lot has been done here in terms of amending to amendments, amending amendments and adding things.
Can I just ask, is the, is, are the comments on Counselor Danahue's motion?
Yes, in the sense that I'm responding to Counselor Dombrowski's comments. I'm trying to figure out why Counselor Danahue's amendments do not represent more of a compromise, more of a true compromise, because she is now supporting US-only on Flag Day, which was the main ask, I thought, of the Veterans Advisory Board.
The other piece to that is because of the rich military history, they're very sensitive about the, what flags fly in front of that building. And so they were, came out, what it came out of that discussion was the flying of the Americal flag throughout the year. And as you both know, and anyone else who watched the meeting or other meetings, there has been a lot of talk about, is there somewhere else that just generally we can have other flags that are not military in nature flying, because the, the Americal's not the seat of our government. We know that. It's, it's Town Hall. And so even the state flag, for instance, flying at the Public Safety Building, it's not really where it belongs. It really, it's better, better to that Town Hall. So I, I know that there was a lot of discussion about the Americal flag, and I think that the second flag pole, save for June, which is, to Counselor Vincent's point, the time when the pride flag is, is generally flown, right, I, I think that the, it's appropriate for this, this former military installation to be flying the Americal on the second flag pole.
So your real problem is having, whether it's above or below, even if it's below, is having the pride flag?
I don't think we should, I don't think we should have two flags flying on the second flag pole, generally, as a general.
Okay, I'm trying to understand your objections.
And I think similar to what this policy says, right? Because that's why the Americal is flying for 11 months and not, you know, not for, for the 12, because we're not doubling up flags on the flag pole, which I, I'm fine with. I'm fine with, for the month of June, having that dedicated to Pride, American flag, Juneking, Pride, right, and that for that month, the Americal won't fly, because the Americal flag will fly 11 months of the year otherwise, which I think is really the intention of what people were looking for. So I, I don't, I think once we get into the business of flying multiple flags on, on the second flag pole, I just think it, I, I think it, it takes away from the prominence of any of those flags. I think a single flag flying, and when the pride flag is flying as a standalone, I think that has more impact. When the Juneteenth flag is flying, I think has more impact. When the American flag is flying on Flag Day, I think it has more impact.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Considering we have a couple amendments and whatnot, I think I'm going to move to postpone a vote until our next meeting on December 11th.
Second? Any discussion? Can I actually ask for a friendly amendment to that, just given that we do have a fair number of things on the agenda for December 11th? If we could maybe indefinitely postpone so that we have some flexibility as to when we bring it back?
I don't mean to play Robert's Rules of Order with you, but when you indefinitely postpone something, that means it's tabled forever. So when you give it a definitive date.
Until we decide to bring it back.
Do you give it, so I, I mean, we could do the first meeting in January, if you want to do that, but I think it should be postponed tonight. There's too many amendments, and it's hard for me to follow verbally, all the different amendments.
Totally. I'm just, from a, just a logistical standpoint, asking if we could have some flexibility on what we're.
Yeah, you want to change it to indefinitely, that's fine.
Thank you. Is there a second? Sorry, is the second quick for that? Any discussion on the motion? Counselor?
There is. I know Counselor McLean has, has spent a lot, a lot of time on this, and I know Counselor, or Chairman Chines, you came, you came in later on with your edits, but Counselor McLean has spent a lot of time on this. We've kicked this can down the road several times already now. I don't think, I, I think we're all clear in what the issues are and what our interpretations or, or positions are relative to this. I don't think kicking, kicking it down out to another meeting is, is going to have any material impact on what the outcome will be relative to this.
Thank you. Counselor McLean?
I agree. There's nothing new here. We, we should be able to follow the amendments. We'll write it out if we need to. I don't support.
Sorry.
Postpone.
I, I have to leave for a family emergency. So if you can postpone, that's great. If not, I'll just go.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, and hope everything's okay. Please, yes. And, and Counselor Danahue, I'll get you next.
Candidly, that's why I have the motion to postpone.
Okay. Counselor Danahue, any comment? Oh, you're muted.
I was going to say that I was not in favor of postponing, but since there was an emergency, I guess I could be persuaded. But I do want to say is that I think that my amendment is a very fair amendment. We're recognizing and, and we're recognizing the request from the Veterans Advisory Board, what about flying the, the, only the American flag on Flag Day, and having the Americal flag flown for its significance to the Americal Civic Center. I think that this makes perfect sense, that we would then fly the pride flag because it is a symbol of inclusivity and welcoming, which is part of our mission statement. So I'm going to, I, if you want to postpone, I'm fine postponing, but I will not change, this is, I will not change my position on this.
Thank you.
So I'm, I think that we can vote on this tonight. So I, I guess that I am in favor on voting on this tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote. Counselor Danahue?
Uh, no.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
No.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
No.
And myself, yes. So the, the vote is 3-3, so the, the motion to indefinitely postpone does fail. So back to Counselor Danahue's motion to amend, is there further discussion on that?
I'll just add my thoughts before we, we call for a vote. I, I'm supportive of the motion in, in spirit. I would want to do some, I personally would want to do some, some work and maybe gather some feedback around the concept of flying multiple flags on the second flag pole before I, I could support it. So given that we are taking a vote today, you know, I will vote no, but that is not a vote on the merits. I think it's more a vote on the technicality of, of timing and so forth. Counselor McLean?
If I made to that comment, policy can be changed at any given meeting, so if, if, if there's enough feedback as a result of what we do or don't do tonight, then this, this council always has the authority to modify a policy.
Other comments on the motion to amend, the motion to amend? All right. Seeing none. So again, just to restate, the motion to amend would amend section 5A to say that the town council would work in collaboration with the Veterans Advisory Board to host a public event to appropriately commemorate Flag Day, and only fly the American flag, the POW flag, and the General Galvin flag on Flag Day, excuse me, and amend 5C to say that the pride flag shall fly every day of the year except June 14th and the days that the Juneteenth fly, flag is flying. So we'll take a roll call vote on the amendment. Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
No.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
No.
Counselor Dombrowski?
No.
And myself, no. So the motion fails. So we are back to Counselor Dombrowski's motion, which stated that on Flag Day, June 14th, only the American flag and POW flag shall be flown, no public events. So just amending 5A. Is there further discussion on that that we haven't covered already? Counsel Dombrowski?
I did just want, wanted to seek to amend that, to add the General Galvin flag on Flag Day as well.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to amend the amendment based on that. Is there any objection? All right. Seeing none. Any further discussion on amending 5A as stated? I know we, we covered this beforehand, so I think we've probably set our piece. All right. Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote on 5, amending 5A as stated. Counselor Danahue?
No.
Counselor Vincent?
No.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
No.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yes.
And myself, no. Motion fails on a vote of 2 to 4. So we are back to the main motion, which is approval of the policy as presented in the package. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Counselor Danahue?
Yes. After this discussion, and my red discussion, and my thought process has been, I reconsidered everything. I am actually going to be voting no on this, because I, I... I reconsidered everything, I am actually going to be voting no on this because I, I think that, I think that the event sounds like it's duplicative and could be competitive with other events in town and I don't want to do that. And so I guess I would revert back to our policy that we have and then, and then I guess bring this back up again at another time. So it's-
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dombrowski?
I did not vote for and I do not support the current policy that we have in place, but I do not think that this policy, as it's drafted, is the solution or the answer. So for that reason, I'm, I'm voting against it.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Seeing none, so just from a logistical standpoint, so folks are aware, obviously if we don't pass a policy, the current policy stays in effect until and unless we take this up again. So motion on the table is to approve the flag policy as presented, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Danahy?
No.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
No.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
No.
And myself, yes, so the motion fails on a 3-3 vote again with Counselor Smith-Galvin absent. All right, thank you. Moving on to Item 5B, Strategic Planning Position Update. Mr. Mayo, this is you.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. And so as the council knows, this summer we did post for the Strategic Growth and Development position. We posted it as we do with, people can hear me, we posted it as we do with all of these items, Mass Municipal Association, we also been doing a lot more with Indeed, and of course our own social media posting. And as part of my process in hiring for any kind of more senior management position, I do set up a screening committee and that is run by our HR department, Human Resources. And this year, in this particular committee, it was, many included Sherri Dalton, our clerk, Erin Kokinda, the Economic and Development Director now, and Bill Renaud, our Town Engineer, thinking that these were the people would have a lot of interaction with this position. And I set up a screening committee for a number of reasons. One, I think it takes all the politics out of it. It's not that someone handed me a resume and said move this to the top, these are very smart people that we use. It's very efficient and it gives me a narrower list to look at because they will refer finalists to me that, then I will interview with the committee again. It also empowers the staff. I think it's very important that, my own personal opinion, it's very important that I empower the staff because they're really the ones that are involved in, in the day-to-day work. And I give them a real hands-off approach, I stay out of it because I would hate to be appointed into a screening committee where the person you're screening it for comes back and tells you what to do. So I kind of stay out of it till they give it back to me. And the results have been great in, in past screening committees from our, I handled that when we did our DPW Director, our Emergency Management Director, our Senior Center Director. We used the same process when we hired our Communications Director, our Building Inspector, and our current Economic Development Director. So it's worked out really, really well in the past. So we put this out there and we got a, a, a great number, great number of applications in the first round and there were 24, a total of 26, 24 completely lacked any sort of experience and maybe a couple may have been thought about. We had people from, an anthropologist, a YMCA Wellness Director, a medical assistant, which I found kind of interesting, and a number of people that had government agency, some government agency experience, maybe a couple that maybe had some sort of strategic planning, but I don't think in the, kind of the zoning area that we were talking about in, you know, urban planning. So we re-advertised, we tweaked it a little bit, we added in LinkedIn, and we also added in a new portal, or a new area called Handshake, which I guess is very, it, it's in the college campuses, it's what a lot of the college campuses use. So that went out and we got 16 new applications and I would say seven are, seven of them are so have the experience we wanted, including a couple of people that have direct planning experience. So we have, we will be setting up interviews for our screening committee, we're setting up interviews and I would expect that hopefully sometimes this month they'll send me their finalists and we can, we can get, get forward and hire a good part of our team. I think we do have more good choices here than we had before, I think really before we didn't have any good choices. After we got none, I looked at them and that's how we found that out. But I know that it takes a little, it's taken a little bit longer, but I've learned over the last 15 years here that sometimes a delayed or a delayed hire is certainly better than the bad hire. So that's where we are, I think we're in a much better place and I think this next round has a few, a few candidates that really look good. And I'll actually be meeting with our HR Director tomorrow morning to schedule the, the new candidates. We did not want to schedule it for the Thanksgiving week, obviously. So that's where we are and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor McLean?
Steve, the first ad, who drafted that?
I did that, I think I met with Counselor Danahy on it and HR. It, it was confusing, I think, to people.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
But do you recall the salary range? Was the range lower than the, our second ad?
It was in that, that 83 to whatever area, including benefits.
And I think I had read that the degrees were not just planning degrees, there were-
Or, or, or relevant experience, yes.
And we haven't advertised either, neither in the first advertisement or the second, we have not advertised the actual title, the director, using the term director from what I see, which I think conveys something out there, that this is a position of significant I'm looking at Senior Planner, Town of Wakefield, and Community Growth and Development Strategist.
That's, that's the new one and got us better people.
The new one is the Senior Planner, is it?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
I'm looking in the flag policy file, I'm not finding-
And I, and I think the educational requirements were much more succinct and to the point in who it is we're trying to hire on, on the second ad.
Yes, yeah.
You know, so I, I consider the first one to have been pretty much, you know, spending some time, you know, where we weren't getting resumes that gave us anybody we wanted to even look at.
The, the, the second one had a salary range of, the first one from 77 to 93,000, thinking that the 100 would also cover benefits-
Okay.
-that we have.
Yeah, I would hope that this board would consider, since we had originally directed that the hire happened in Q1 and we are now well into Q2, that we would consider, since our prior vote was for the fiscal, current fiscal year, we would consider doing this from a subsequent date of hire, now that we have candidates and now that we're going to have interviews. Are interviews scheduled?
I guess, no, I said they would be scheduled, we didn't want to schedule them Thanksgiving week.
Okay.
I don't understand your point on the date of, on the-
Well, I believe we funded it through ARPA, through the fiscal year-
Correct, correct, correct.
And I think fiscal year will run out next June.
Right, right.
So I think the board, you know, the council should consider revisiting that if we're actually going to hire somebody, whether that's a budgetary process or something we could do individually for the meeting.
My, my, my thought would be to include the salary in the budget, in our tax levy budget, regular budget.
For fiscal 2025.
For fiscal 25, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's actually preferable, that's good. And the, I had noted that we didn't have 40B in there, has anybody added 40B?
No, but people that have hired have a lot of experience with 40B, so they're planners.
The ones that we're getting now-
Yes, the ones that are getting now.
Understand that 40B is a part of this.
Right, I understand, 40B and 40A unfortunately.
Yep. And, and is it, I had also, you know, requested that you put in that this person would report directly to you.
It's a direct report to me, yes.
Is that stated yet? I didn't see it, that's why I'm asking. I had asked previously.
Right. I think it would be certainly, it seemed to me that, that these candidates coming in are senior level, so I think that they're thinking that anyway, but I, it's, it's not exactly in there that way.
Right.
But that, that is what will happen.
But you, you had indicated it's a senior management position, so I want to make it clear that that's what we're conveying to this.
This is a direct report.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Counselor Danahy?
Yes, I did not have any input into, I think when I made the presentation, I included some, a job description, Steve, I think I had sent to you a more detailed than what I presented to the council, but I, I did not confer with you on that initial job posting. And you know, we did say the salary range that it recommended, based on some research, was the salary was 85,000 to 115,000, based on posted job descriptions for senior town planners, so we might be a little bit low. And I know that there's also, through our Green Communities Grant, that we can use $20,000 towards that position, so if we need to go a little bit higher, that that's possible.
Right. Well, halfway through the fiscal year, we have 100,000, so we might not, we can use that for something else, the green, the green communities.
I'm just saying is that it's important to get the right person. I'm a little concerned that when you said handshake, handshake is what, it's an entry, it's a college, it's a tool for college students to use, and so I just want to make sure that we're getting very qualified people. We've seen everything we have in front of us, including, you know, 40B, 40A, bike pedestrian plan, we have the, you know, implementation of, of all of, all of the things, we have so many great things going on, the micro-transit, you know, so many great things going on that there's a lot of work and it's going to take somebody who's very nimble and adept and experienced and also somebody who has the skillset to deal with, with the public in terms of gathering input and is really skilled at being able to take that input, listen, and apply it. So I just want to make sure we get a really senior level person.
So do I, and the second set looks much better.
Yeah, good, good.
Thank you, Counselor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Mayo, for your, your team's work on this. I guess one of the concerns that I have generally is when we kind of, when we were talking about this, the creation of this position, we specifically talked about the fact that this would not be a planner role, you know, I know you had mentioned that from some other peer communities, they seem to be kind of phasing that out, and so we really, I, I think created this like rather dynamic position, but from checking in with you from time to time on this, it seemed like there isn't this unicorn out there that kind of fits the position that we had envisioned.
I think, yeah, I think adding the planning aspect got us into that genre that people had actually had done some of that for.
I'm just concerned that, you know, that if we're going to be having money spent on this going forward, because this is obviously a, a long-term commitment for the town, I'm just concerned that, you know, we were never looking for a senior planner, nor do I think that's, that's the best use of our, of the town's resources. So if what we envisioned this role to be can't be realized, then I really think we should reevaluate whether it makes sense. And, you know, a senior planner is going to have a certain skillset, but that wasn't what we were looking for specifically, that was a part of what we were looking for.
I think this, this second group seems to have, on paper, more experience in not only the nuts and bolts of planning, but things like transportation, new parts of it. So I think that we're, we're finding unicorn-ish type people, but we'll be very careful.
I mean, again, I'm not saying, based on what you're saying, I'm not seeing a single resume, obviously, but I just, would just make sure that, hope that we're mindful of the fact that if you can't find a fit that's going to check all the boxes, then sometimes rather than even just waiting for the right fit, maybe it's, maybe we just don't hire in that case if we can't find somebody, you know, so I, I don't want you or your team-
I'm hopeful we can find the right person, but I, your point is well taken.
Counselor Butt and then Counselor McLean?
Yeah, I just want to add, I'm really excited you got good resumes as someone who does hiring, I feel like almost monthly at my current job, so it's getting the resumes-
Some of them are very interesting coming in.
Resumes are, oh, we had candidates from all over the world for my last position, so I, I will say, I'm, I'm excited for this position and I think it's important, A, to realize like all the work that your, your current team is doing, they're just doing so much. We have, as Counselor Danahy said, we have so many projects going on, including, you know, eventually the master plan, remembering the visioning statement, 40A, 40B, the, the pedestrian bike plan, you know, we years ago had a great walkability project that we'll need to take on, the economic councils getting back together or starting, kicking off soon. So I, I feel like it's even changed in the short time since we dedicated the funding. I, I think what's going to be really important, Steve, is, you know, to think of all your positions as a team position and what skillsets people have that this can balance out. And so, you know, you've got, you've got a really strong engineering department and you've got Erin who's amazing and you've got a DPW that's great with Ann and Joe and the rest of the team, but really think about the skillsets that will counter that and help you out, right, of, of what, what you could help. You can't go to every single meeting that we have with all of these groups, and so, you know, who is coming in that can do all of that? So I just, I think not to get so caught up on the title or, or, you know, the, as we look at kind of the responsibilities, really look at it as who's going to be, help you and your leadership team and what, and what skills are missing there or what could we use support with.
Thank you. Counselor McLean?
To Counselor Dombrowski's comments, we, we've, we've kind of been through this in past meetings and we're set, we're standing up new, new things at the same time, we're standing up the economic, I think you're going to be involved in, economic development. When you look at our Economic and Community Development, you know, Ms. Kokinda's page on the left is commercial, and we just had Victor in here talking about how, you know, we really need to focus on commercial development. At the same time, this same person is being pulled over here with 40A, 40B, Steve told me this morning, you know, Erin's starting to look for a consultant on the Housing Production Plan, which we should be on top of right now, we should have been on top of it two years ago. So who's going to work on that? If Erin has to work on all of these things we're talking about, we're setting up an Affordable Housing Trust, we're, we've appointed committee members to the Housing Trust, it's funded, it's got also, you know, a planning aspect, so I'm not saying we just need a senior planner, in fact, the position description wasn't senior planner, it was Director of Strategy, you know, Planning and Strategic Development, and hopefully we can get a person that really fits that bill and is multi-talented, including transit. But I wouldn't, Counselor, I wouldn't immediately go to, well, gee, maybe we shouldn't fund this position. I'd go to, let's fund this position, get the right person, because we really need it. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Mayo, I'd ask that you keep us posted as, as the hiring process goes through and look forward to finding that fabulous unicorn that we've been looking for.
I think we have a lot of unicorns in our employees already.
Already, yeah. We have a lot of unicorns already, but adding one is, adding another unicorn is, is a good thing. All right, next up, Item 5C, Wakefield Memorial High School Request for Approval of Proprietary Items. Mr. Mayo, are you taking this one too?
I think we may have some people from the Permanent Building Committee here as well. I think so. Sherri Dewey?
They're coming over now.
They're coming over now, yeah, perfect.
Mm-hmm. Hi, Joe, hi Lynn, can you hear us?
Hi.
All right, welcome. Mr. Bertrand, are you kicking this off or Lynn, are you speaking for this?
I'll, I'll kick it off and Lynn will, will help me if I make any mistakes. Basically, the Permanent Building Committee is recommending nine products for the Wakefield Memorial High School building that are to be listed as proprietary items. It is requirement under the MSBA that you, as the town officials, have to vote on the inclusion of these proprietary items. There are nine products altogether, six of them have to do with building security, one has to do with the folding fire barrier, a sliding accordion barrier when there's a, an emergency, a fire emergency. Another one has to do with insulated glazing units for the front of the proposed building, which is all glass. which is all glass, and the fourth one has to do with locks, the door hardware, so that all is consistent with all the other buildings in town, as well as the security system. So, as indicated, these are going to be proprietary, they will not be part of any bidding process, and it's been recommended by the architects, by Left Field, the owner's project manager, for these proprietary items. If you want to add anything, Lynn, please do so.
Yes, it's also a mass general law requirement that if you limit competition on certain items, that you have to go through this process of stating why, what, why it's in the best interest of the public, and recording the vote, so that during the bid process, they still have to bid on the proprietary items, but during the process, there's documentation that says why these items will, no other items, but these items will be accepted.
And just as another piece of context for the council, these were reviewed by the Permanent Building Committee, Joe, last week, no, before Thanksgiving, if memory serves, and were recommended for council's approval unanimously by the Permanent Building Committee at that meeting. Any questions from the council? Councilor Dobrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and thank you, Permanent Building Committee and, and consulting, Left Field team. Can you just help those watching, and, and me, somewhat better understand why it is that these particular items are proprietary? It seems like it's like pass cards, and security cameras, and fire alarms, and things of that nature, that, that seem to be, you know, rather routine in most, most projects, you know, what is it that makes these excludable from the, or recommended to be excludable, excludable from just the, the regular, you know, bidding process?
The security has to be compatible with the other schools, with all the, and consistent across multiple schools, and you, if you have multiple manufacturers, that may not, it could lead to a, to a breakdown or two problems in this, in, for the security issues. That's the security part. Lynn, you want to comment on the fire barrier?
The fire barrier is basically proprietary, only because there's only, I mean, it's the only manufacturer that makes the, this automatic partition that is tied in with the fire alarm, when the fire alarm goes off, the barrier goes up in place. So there's no competition anyway for this particular product in terms of its capabilities and operation.
As far as the locks go, and the door hardware, that is consistent with all the other schools, and has been suggested by the facilities director at the school.
And then just to follow up on that, I guess the other concern that, that I have obviously is, is the safety, and that, that's the locks, that's the security cameras, and the passcodes and whatnot. So I understand that we have these systems at our other facilities or other schools. In, in ideal worlds, I guess, specifically Left Field, would we go with these systems? Are these the safest, you know, is this the safest system that we could install within the new building, or, you know, if it weren't for the fact that we had connectivity issues with the other buildings, would, would you perhaps suggest that we, we go in a different direction?
I think that these are fairly standard security equipment that is in other schools, and the fact that you want all of your schools compatible with each other, and also familiar to the both police and fire departments, it makes it the best reason for continuing on with these, these products. But I think these are high performers in each of these categories, you know, if you're looking at all schools in the Commonwealth.
And regarding security, the, a couple of weeks ago, we, working group with the Permanent Building Committee met with the police chief and the architect in Left Field, and we went over the various security systems, and it was unanimously the opinion of the most secure system we could get is the one we're going to get.
I think that's terrific, then.
Police chief was, was all on board with that.
Great. Well, thank you to, to your team for that work, too, Mr. Bertrand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines, thank you for your presentation. I do have one quick question for you, if you could go to the last bullet on three A, the energy compliant, it says the IGU meets the stringent energy code requirements of the Massachusetts stretch code. The Permanent Building Committee looked at this and recommended approval on November sixteenth, and the stretch code was accurate on that day, but two days later, on November eighteenth, at town meeting, the town approved the specialized energy code bylaw. So my question is, does the IGU meet the stringent energy code requirements of the Massachusetts specialized energy code? Because now we have a heightened energy code based on the town meeting vote on November eighteenth.
That doesn't go into effect until July or...
Right, goes into effect in July, that's correct, yeah.
Right, and we'll be, we'll be well-permanent and everything well before that.
I believe that it does, though, I will check to confirm, but we did know the requirements of the opt-in code well in advance of these proprietary items. You know, selecting and voting on these proprietary items, because we strive to, for the existing building to meet the opt-in code already, without any additional cost. So wherever we could, we complied with the more stringent code in the building.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Any other further questions? All right, seeing none, we will take a motion to approve the request for proprietary items for the new Wakefield Memorial High School building project.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Councilor Danahue?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Bertrand, Ms. Stapleton, for joining us, and for the continued work here. I will say again, as the council's liaison to the building committee, there is a ton of work that is going into this, it's super exciting, but, you know, certainly involves a lot of effort on the part of, particularly in the case of the Permanent Building Committee, a lot of volunteers, so thank you for everything again.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, moving on to item six, licenses. The first license approval in front of us is a one-day liquor license for a chamber members' holiday networking event. Do we have a motion for that?
Move to approve the one-day liquor license for chamber members' holiday networking event.
And I'll second it.
Great, any discussion? All right, seeing none, motion is to approve the one-day liquor license, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilor Danahue?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Item six B is a 2023 common victular license for, I'm going to totally mispronounce this, but we'll try, Ado Chica Doche, located at 386 Main Street, and I did mispronounce that, I apologize.
I think it was excellent.
And I looked it up, it means sweet, sweet in Portuguese.
Yep.
Yeah.
Not a language I speak.
Can I move it, can I move it without repeating?
You can.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? I will just say I am very excited for them to be open and to stuff myself with Paudicay show repeatedly. So we'll take a, a roll call vote on that. Councilor Danahue?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Item six B, we are starting our journey of the 2024 license renewals, and before we start taking motions, Ms. Dalton, is there anything from a contextual perspective that we, we need to be aware of before starting to go in category by category? Any, anything from your perspective, is the one who does an amazing job of organizing all this, needs to share with us?
So everything before you has already been approved through the timeline with every required department, so all of those are all set to be voted on.
Great, and Mr. Mayo, anything from, from your side?
No, I agree, I think that they've all gone through the process, you'll see another larger list at our next meeting.
Maybe.
Maybe, yeah. You can, this portal that, you know, Sherry put together, really each department gets, you know, the application, and they can't move forward unless each department signs off, so it really is a good, good way to make sure the health, what health sees it, police sees it, fire sees it, building, tax collector sees it, so we know that everybody's signed off on it, and then it comes here for, for your approval. You can certainly take these by area, has they're listed, and before you get to the fortune teller, they should already know what you're going to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
Yes, I know you guys wanted me, I was aiming to that today, I wasn't going to do it, but...
So now we can start with our motions. Mr. McLean, do we have a motion related to the 2024 common victular licenses?
We do. A move that we approve the 2024 license renewals for the common victualers.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Councilor Danahue?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, motion carries six zero.
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in?
Sure.
In conference with town council, he and I are both very comfortable, if you just wanted to list each area in one motion and did it all at once. Mr. McLean, it's up to you.
Oh, definitely.
All right, Councilor McLean, do we have one omnibus motion?
We do, I would like to move that we approve the 2024 license renewals for the following categories of businesses, liquor license, package store, entertainment, tap-in televisions, and streaming devices, fortune teller, automated device, electronic games, class one and class two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion is presented?
Just a friendly, we just added the all alcohol, because we said liquor license, and then we said package store, but we just, all alcohol, just if we're going to...
Councilor McLean, is that amenable to you?
Absolutely, yes, I missed the all alcohol under the liquor license, yes.
Other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call vote. Councilor Danahue?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, motion carries six zero.
Can I, can I just say, as, I just do want to thank Sherry for all her work on this, because as a, as, as one of the deans on the council, I remember the old days when there was not a process, and it was like chicken scratch, and Sherry was tasting businesses, so I do want to thank you, Sherry, for all the work that you do on this every year. And also just a reminder for anyone that's still watching, we have amazing local businesses in this holiday season, we have a list of people that you can go and support, and they've got it in their license renewals in time, so you can congratulate them on that, but thank you, Sherry, for all the work that you do.
Thank you. And thank you to our businesses, too, I mean, you know, I think the, to your point, the timing of when we get some of these applications has improved because of a lot of the process improvements we've put in place, but it's also effort on the part of our businesses, and, you know, the fact that it's, you know, the end of November, and we've got, you know, a good chunk of them done for 2024 is, is great. All right, moving on, item number seven, do we have a motion for approval of the town council meeting minutes for November thirteenth, 2023?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Councilor Danahue?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Item seven B, we'll take a motion for approval of the November thirteenth, 2023 town council executive session minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Councilor Danahue?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Item number eight, announcements. Any announcements from the council, or Mr. Mayo, or Ms. Dalton, or Mr. Mullen? Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines, I have two announcements. One, folks in town have probably noticed, the soldiers and sailors monument restoration is underway. Significantly, the reconstruction of the damaged elements of the lower military figures are being repaired, and they've been taken to the location of the expert down in Watertown or Cambridge who's working on it. There's temporary fencing up because they're going to repair and refinish the iron fencing that was there, and they're also going to clean and treat the two lower cannons that are located there as well. No guarantees, but it's going to be repaired somewhere between late next fall and early 2025. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the Reef Lane Ceremony will take place at Forest Glade Cemetery on Saturday, December thirteenth at noon. I know a lot of us on town council go to that in the past. If you're interested in donating a reef, you can go online and look under the Veterans' Advisory Board, and they have the mechanism by which you can order them online, or you can mail in a, a donation to a sponsor to donate a reef.
Bob, I think it's the sixteenth.
What did I say?
The thirteenth, just the Saturday, right? I think it's the sixteenth.
Yeah, I'm looking through my bifocals, thanks for correcting, yes, Saturday, December sixteenth at noon.
And Councilor Vincent, you happen to know, how far are they from the, the goal of the number of reefs we, we like to be able to distribute?
I don't know how far away, but they, the word that went out last week or so was they still are looking for sponsors, they didn't have enough, so they definitely are looking, that's what prompted me to go and do a couple.
Awesome, thank you.
Last week, thank you.
Other announcements from the council? Councilor Butt?
So I have a religious theme today, I didn't realize that, I just wanted to thank the Wakefield Interfaith clergy, clergy...
Council.
Council, like coalition, what's their, yes, council on their Thanksgiving interfaith service that they had last week, it was a beautiful event, many of the churches in town and the synagogue in town were there, and they were gathering offerings for the Wakefield Food Pantry, and raised over seven hundred dollars for our food pantry, so thank you to everyone that organized that. And on that note, the menorah lighting in our town, a great annual tradition, will be Thursday, December seventh, at six PM, right?
Right. Thank you. Other announcements? Councilor Dobrowski?
I just wanted to remind everyone that on Monday, the eleventh of, of December, at two PM, I am hosting a reindeer games event at the senior center, all are welcome to attend. If you're interested in attending, if you could just sign up in advance, that would be great, through the senior center, and I can guarantee that it will be a great time with possibly a chance to win a million dollars. I can't say definitively, but it's possible, thanks.
Councilor McLean?
Town councilors don't always get one hundred percent positive emails, so I just wanted to say, I got an email the other day from the New England Sixty-Five Plus Running Club, asking me where they could send a check to the friends of Lake Wanda Park. I responded very quickly, and that was a good email to get, and I believe they also contribute from Jerry's Run for All Ages to Wakefield Educational Foundation. That's it.
Great, thank you. Always good to share good news. Couple of announcements, just that I wanted to share, we have a couple of opportunities for public feedback, perhaps not on the most critical of issues, but still really important to some, our name a snowplow contest is underway, there were some, some great nominations from some of our kiddos in town, so please go online to vote, I think we also have forms at town hall, so you can put your, put your mark on the newest snowplow owned by the town. On a more serious note, also, the, the Human Rights Commission is looking for nominations for their Community Activist Awards for Martin Luther King and Coretta Scott King Day in January, and I think in the past, we've, we've seen the commission honor some, you know, really, really, you know, great volunteers in town, people that really contribute a lot to the civic life there, and so if there's someone that you want to recognize, or encourage folks to go online and, and nominate someone as you choose.
When you do?
Oh, sure. Couple of other things I do want to highlight, I want to recognize a few of our, our teams at the high school. Since we last met, we have two state championship teams, the Wakefield High School Dance Team and the Wakefield High School Girls Cross Country Team, so great job by both of those. Also want to offer congratulations to the cast and crew of Descendants, which was... and crew of Descendants, which was the, the fall musical at Wakefield High School, which was not surprisingly outstanding as everything that the theater department there does. So really great work there, and been great to see, you know, so many young people in so many different areas of dance and, and athletics and, and performing arts really, really show their stuff. And then finally, also on another holiday note, though certainly less heavy than, than some of the others, the Wakefield Community Neighborhood Association tree lighting is coming up this Friday evening around dusk. So come on by and join us for, for celebration for that. And Councilor McLean, you had something else to add?
Yes, one other item that came to mind that I'd forgotten about, for anybody who's interested. I believe if you go to the planning board's website, the final, or the third, I believe it is, public comment meeting will be held, I believe it's on December 12th. The Zoom link is on the planning board's website, so no excuse not to participate. It involves 48 and the proposed, the working group proposed current setup for complying with 48. I will be attending, and I hope a lot of citizens attend as well.
Thank you. Councilor Vincent?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chair Chines. Our next meeting is December 11th?
Correct.
I'll get this date right. The Army-Navy game is on December 9th, so let me conclude the meeting by just saying, go Navy, beat Army.
Excellent. Any other announcements from anyone? Nope. Seeing none. All right, you did have the last word in terms of announcements. Item number nine, matters not anticipated. Do we have any matters not anticipated from the council? Seeing none. Item number 10 is adjournment. As we said, our next meeting is on Monday, December 11th at 7:00 PM. That will be our last anticipated meeting of the calendar year. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Any objections to adjournment? Seeing none. Well, we are hereby adjourned at about 8:52 PM. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Thank you to my counselors for the discussion. Hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in two weeks.